All right, it is now 7:01. We'll call the meeting to order for November 19th, 7:00 p.m. The first order of business is agenda changes. The Chair is going to go first. I have an agenda change. We have to do a resolution changing the auditing officer's position. So, first order of new business will be Resolution 15-02. I believe it's 02 and 03. It is. What do you know?
New business, you said?
That'll be new business. Yes, ma'am. All right. Further agenda changes. Commissioner Singleton?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffmann? Commissioner Pierce?
No thanks.
None.
And we are done with agenda changes.
I would just pull that very much.
Yes, you too. Public comment. And it's great we've got -- I've got to say for the record before we start public comment that we were, I think, as a collective whole blown away. We went out as part of hiring the new director. We did a tour of all the district properties and together. And I think we all -- I think I could speak freely for all of us. The difference in that place is phenomenal. It's not night and day, it's phenomenal. Thank you so much from each and every one of us for what your group has done and taken ownership out there because it is amazing. So, from all of us, thank you. And I know that the three members of the Board that are going to be here next year want to go out there on a more regular basis as a group. And I'm sure they will talk to you about even meeting some of your folks out there and getting together with the director. So, thank you very, very much. With that, we go to public comments. So, Mr. Michael, how do you say it, Mike?
Frasch.
Frasch. Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael Frasch.
I just wanted to thank you all for your support, for helping us, letting us speak our opinions and our voices to help that park right there. And I just wanted to make sure that everything is running smoothly and all that stuff right there to continue making it a great park, better than it can be right now, even though it is coming to a very, very good park the way it should be with all the dogs that are there. So, I can't wait until the next meeting, the 2016 budget meeting, I guess, is coming up here shortly. So...
Who are we talking about tonight, Alan?
I think we're talking about a little bit tonight. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody is going to come out there and make even better park right there. So, thank you very much for helping us out with this. The dogs love it over there.
That's cool. Thank you, Michael.
I'd just like to add one thing out there. Has anybody been out -- has anybody got there Tuesday?
No.
There is water. It's probably drained by now.
Yes.
But, you know, we do have some water problems out there that we do have to look at when the water meets up. Admittedly, it rained a whole lot these past two weeks, but we do get this every now and then. So, there is some stuff we have to look at as far as a lot of water. I mean, there's also gravel that they talked about that needs to come up. So, just when we do that, we just need to look at all that. But, as Sean said, it looks great. And later on, I'd like to see if we can make a motion on doing a letter certification or something like that.
Why don't we go into Board issues and if you'd like to propose that?
Aren't we talking about...
Talking about a letter of appreciation?
For the first class...
The Dog Park is an agenda item, so maybe that would be better.
Okay. I'm just wondering where we can do it.
Yes, no, I agree.
Thank you.
Good point.
The reason I gave it, Mike, that way you can see where the 2016 is on the budget or the budget is on the agenda.
I got you.
All right, cool.
And I just want to -- the first class mess for the FRC Northwest, and it's also a lot of the actual regulars that come out there as well that help out on a regular basis. So, it's a combination of both my command and the regulars that come there that help out. It's everybody that can, they just pick up trash. Something small like that actually makes a very big difference.
Awesome.
Cool.
Board issues. Commissioner Hoffmann?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Pierce?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Hawley?
None.
Commissioner Singleton?
Of course. Actually, so the January meeting, I realize it's going to be hard to disposition this now, but I won't be able to be at the January meeting, so I'm wondering if we can potentially change the date?
Well, since the date has not been set yet...
Oh, okay. Well, since it would typically -- the date, it would typically be on, I will not be in town. And so, I would prefer if we can try to pick an alternate date for that. I realize that is difficult with the members involved, but...
What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, can you give me the Thursdays that you will be available? And I will pass that on at the next board meeting. That way...
Yeah, good idea.
Well, I was going to say, right now, three of us are here that will be on that Board.
That's true.
I think we could make that decision so that those of us who aren't going to be here next will know in advance of January, this is when we show up. And the week prior to when it normally is scheduled, I know I had already looked and my calendar is fine on that night, if that works for the two of you.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, I could do it the week before or the week after, but I think I would...
So, before we start too much open discussion, let me get a motion, please.
I move that we -- well, why don't you make the motion since it's your change, but so I won't say something that you don't want.
You're going to make a motion to change the date of the meeting for the January 2016 regular Board of Commissioners meeting?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move that we set the January 2016 regular meeting to Thursday, January 14.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, we can have discussion. Thank you.
I'm not going to be on the Board, but I do have concern that the initial thing, you were trying to get all five together. That is the month you're going to establish who your officers are. And it would be very important if all five of you could be together, if you could be flexible for the other two people to where if they had a date that didn't work, to where you can move that around.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But, well, I mean, based on the motion, it would have, the motion would have to be changed. And that's fine. I think it's just the point was to try to set something so that everybody...
It couldn't be changed, though, because the two of you won't be on it to change it. And to rescind it, you see where I'm going?
Yeah, and maybe what we could do is, I'm sorry, and I'm talking over you. Maybe what we could do is also say, alternate dates are, and I'm good, any Thursday of the month of January. The only, and the problem with the last Thursday, I got jury duty called. Now, hopefully, it'll be one of those gets continued, everything's, you know, no, you don't have to come in, but if it does, that Thursday is, and it's like, who knows?
And I'm not trying to be argumentative. The thought was just from trying to help you guys to start off on that, you know, not to exclude any...
No, 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 and we should, we want to make sure.
It certainly isn't the intention. I can let it go. I can always rescind the motion. I'm just going to, no, I, seriously, because here's the thing, they can set it. I don't really care. The fact is, for me, for my business, I will be out of town, and I know this. Set it any other date. The 7th is unrealistic because it's unfair to the staff. So, that is not good. I believe waiting for the 28th is not optimal because it's waiting too long. But, again, I'm killing the motion. They can set it next month, and that's fine. I'm not...
Don't kill the motion.
I'm withdrawing it.
Okay, motion withdrawn. All right. So, we'll leave that up to next month.
Sure. Can we target the date, please, that Commissioner Hawley and Singleton were talking about? Did that be the first...
So, you're going to make a motion that we target January 14th for the first...
You can give a suggestion, and then next month, we can sit there and vote on it.
That's what I was thinking, that we...
You know, so there's kind of an understanding.
That the three of us say, recommend that that be the date, that we target the date that these two ladies are asking for.
Cecil, does that date work for you?
I don't know, in all honesty.
Okay.
And not because my calendar here is not up to date with what I've got at home and, you know, probably so, but I don't want to say yes.
You do, as we're having open discussion.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, we've kind of threw Robert's out the window there. That's okay. It was worth it. So, I've got a target date. I will bring it up for discussion. We'll add it to the agenda for next month. That way, that way, it's an agenda item so we don't forget.
What's the target date again?
It'll be the 14th, Thursday.
Thursday, the 14th? And I will run that by one young man, and he'll be here.
Cool.
And my jury duty for your notes starts on the 21st. That's, you know...
At 7 o'clock, right?
And I would think not, but what if, you know, we got sequestered? You never know. That happens on TV all the time.
You watch too much New York.
I absolutely do.
Well, there could be a big trial coming, too.
All right, further Board issues.
Thought about that.
No, no further Board issues. The approval of minutes. We're on to our next agenda item there, approval of minutes. And there's only a couple.
Why don't I just, let me go down the list. I would like to move that we approve the minutes from October 15th, 2015, the regular meeting.
All right, discussion.
I believe we can call a question.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on September 30th, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on October 13th, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. I do have a point.
Yeah.
What would be good is if we just did all the special, all the meetings together.
I do have...
We can do that.
Yes, we can. Because I write them up that way. I do have one...
Hold on, that motion hasn't been made yet.
Okay.
So, further discussion on the special meeting from October 13th. That's one we're on, correct?
Yes.
No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye. I would like to move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on October 23rd, 2015, special meeting October 28th, 2015, special meeting October 29th, 2015, special meeting November 5th, 2015, special meeting November 6th, 2015, and special meeting November 9th, 2015.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, I need to, on the November 5th meeting minutes, I had a couple of attachments listed, and I forgot to detail them at the end. I just need to do that. And so, and it's like, I realized it, it was in the back of my head, and I was like, oh, shoot. So, it was the November 5th. It was just, I talked about a couple of attachments that were the N.W.A.C., like the Wendy, it's so that I don't have to talk about what's on the pieces of paper we get handed at meetings. But, one was Wendy's thing, and then it seemed like there was something else. Anyway, there were two. And so, if you trust me, I'll appropriately label them and put them on there, but, because I don't even know what I would say, because it was like, I have to pull it out and look at the title on it, and then I say how many pages it is. That's what, that's all it is. It's just, it's not in there, so it should be.
Concerns?
I would just amend the motion. But, it's not my motion.
Amend the motion to include...
The changes. The changes.
I would, I move that we...
Or amend?
Amend the motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on November 5th, November 5th, 2015, to include the two attachments that Commissioner Hawley has mentioned.
Thank you. Oh, second.
Thank you. Further discussion. I would like to thank Commissioner Hawley for all of her hard work in getting all of those meetings' minutes put together prior to this meeting. So, thank you.
I thought it was Connie.
It is Connie.
She helped.
Connie helped. Touche. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Voucher review.
I move that we approve, where'd they go, vouchers 6880 through 6906 and 6908 through 6923 for the amount of $29,216.88 and payroll transfer from the M&amp;O account to payroll account of $41,256.93.
I have a second.
Cecil's seconds. Discussion. We're sorry to disturb you.
Oh, you didn't, you're a captain, and you're just in the meetings.
Aw, thank you so much.
Take care.
Said no one else ever. Sorry. There was $332 Sharp copier machine usage. Did we go do some massive copying somewhere? Is that what that was for? Sharp Business Systems?
Yes, it was.
On the 1st of October, Sharp copier machine usage. Sharp Business Systems, $332.
Was it serviced?
It was.
Oh, so it's service, not, okay.
May I ask a question? The latex gaskets for the kayaks?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, my question is, on those kayaks, because we spent a lot of money on those, are they, they're out in the weather, right?
Yes.
Is there, I mean, we really need to look at a way to cover those somehow, because we've invested a lot of money in that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know that, me personally, I have two polymer kayaks, and I would never leave them outside. They're in my garage. You take them where the cars should be. Car can handle it, and my kayak's important. So, but, yeah, I mean, because I don't know what this gasket is, but is this something that's deteriorated due to weather is my concern, you know?
Probably not to weather. Those, I think, came off of some of the older kayaks that we are still keeping, that needed to be replaced. And I do believe there were kayaks that were out in the weather. They were at one point covered, but with the wind, they are going longer.
Okay.
Do we still have any on the ground?
No, I don't.
Because that's even worse.
Because, you know, one time we did.
Yeah, that's even worse.
There might be one out by the trailer.
If we could maybe look at what it would take to get those to where we're protecting our investment on those. Thank you very much.
What's a CC machine? Installation of switching cabling for CC machine?
Card processing machine.
Oh, okay, okay. And magic coder? Magic coder. Trash bags and magic coder from hardware. M-A-G-I-K-O-T-E-R, magic coder.
I don't know.
Okay.
What else, ma'am?
I've just never heard of that. The $197,000 tax distribution that we got on the 31st, is that, because we also got the P&amp;L update, and that showed us minus $100,000. Was that the 197 part of that, so we're still down?
You might know that number.
I don't know that answer.
I just, I saw the number, and I was very concerned.
No, I think the $197,000 is not part of that.
Okay, so then we're actually not down that much. We're not down.
That's my understanding. I will double check on that one.
I didn't think so, because the property taxes that were on the profit loss statement that we got was, we're only at 334, and I knew there was a big chunk of change coming. So, oh, it does say through October 28th? Excellent. So, in fact, the, okay, the budget's not as bad as I thought. Okay.
Does it say through October 28th?
The profit loss statement that they sent us out?
Oh.
It said through, yeah, through October 28th. Did she send it out Monday or Tuesday?
Yes. All in favor of approving the district vouchers 6880 through 6906 and 6908 through 6923 for the amount of $29,216.88 and the M&amp;O account to payroll for $41,256.93?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Director selection is unfinished business, and that was taken care of with a special meeting. We obviously have selected our new director. He's been in place for a while. I don't think there's any more discussion on that.
I thought you wanted to make like a public announcement, although you're right, we did it in public on the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Director's title. Title according to the bylaws is director. And there was discussion during the hiring process among the Board...
And at the last meeting.
And at the last regular meeting about changing the title.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we update, we change the bylaws and all subsequent documents to rename director to executive director.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I think this is, as we've seen in the past, has been brought to our attention, this is a move in the right direction to give him that, to give the person that is in that position the correct title for parity with those in like positions across the parks and rec and the industry as a whole, so...
As a point of clarification, is a simple vote or is a resolution required because it's a change in the bylaws?
A resolution would be required. So, we'd have to draft the resolution. It would actually be 15-04 after the meeting, but we can go ahead and vote on it.
Okay. And just for clarity purposes, for the record, we did, you know, we were voting on this in unfinished business because it's a change to the bylaws as well.
That is correct.
As required by rules of order.
That is correct. Thank you. Further discussion?
One question I have, and maybe you guys could tell me. This does not change the scope of responsibility.
No.
Okay.
It is a title change. It's a good question. It is a title change.
Does it give, I mean, more authority than what, you know, the group would, okay. So, it doesn't change any of that?
No. Title change only.
I thought the title changer was going to be CAS, but, you know, executive director will work, you know?
We both carry the same weight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Advertising proposal?
So, who will draft it? Sorry, before we move on.
I will have to draft the resolution, so...
Okay.
No, that's my responsibility.
Understood, and, you know, is that something, sorry, I just wanted to clarify before we move on. So, it would need to be prior to the 24th so that we can sign it? There is no additional, we just need to sign it? Is that accurate?
No, no, we just need to sign it.
Okay.
Once it's been voted on in public meeting, and I'll have to use the exact wording that we used, and I will draft that proposal, and it will be in the office to sign by... Did you write the per word for that?
I have it in the mail by Monday.
We'll try.
Wendy moved to change the bylaws and other necessary...
Supporting documents.
Supporting documents, thanks. That's what you said.
Sounds good.
To rename director to executive director.
Yeah, I'll have that done by Monday.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You were a Marine. You don't try, you just do.
This is admin work. Those aren't real meetings. And that is on public record.
Wow.
All right, advertising proposal?
All right. Actually, I, the only thing I have to present here is where I think we should go with this. But, I actually don't have a handout, as you probably noticed in your packets. The more I thought through how this process should go, it didn't really make sense for us to try to agree on a direction when, in fact, by the time we get to an approval process, I want to move it forward. Trust me, I do. But, I think two things are necessary. I think it makes sense to do it with the support of the continuing Board, number one. And number two is, I would like to ask the executive director to be, but to partner, to partner with you and/or someone that you designate to try to do this together. I mean, I think that's, that's going to be the most effective way to do it. So, that's how I'd like to do it moving forward.
So, we're going to carry forward the advertising proposal?
Yeah. Is that, yeah, is that fair? I mean, just, it just didn't seem to make sense to have a group here agree on it, and then by the time you get to vote on something, it could be an entirely different feeling about the want to do it, so...
Further discussion? The motion has been carried forward?
It's not a motion.
Oh, that's true. The proposal, the business has been carried forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I stand corrected. All right, program review, fee change.
Okay. All right. Pull out your packages. Again, I apologize for getting those so late. I just, after writing the minutes, it took me a while to make myself go back to my computer and work on this. So, I sent you the list of the approved changes, which we had voted on in the last couple of meetings. So, you have those. All right, so pull out the two-page...
May I make a copy of that? Because by the time I got it, I wasn't home.
Oh, here, you may have this copy.
You sure? Okay, thank you.
I have others, I think.
Please.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay, so turn to this page. So, we...
Is that the draft proposal?
This is draft, yeah, draft proposal. Sorry. The one that goes all the way down to the bottom is the first page. Okay, I'm just going to run by these line by line, and then if you, let me just get through it all once, and then, so if you have a comment or a question on something, just make a little note, and then we'll go over your questions, because I just don't want to get hung up on something. Okay, so multiple session is something that we don't have right now, and it was what the staff recommended, and Anna, of course, has one. But, it's like, so that the person that comes in to do lap swim, and they also want to do an aerobics class, it's, that's what that's for. It's kind of a cost recovery thing, but that's, that's what it is. Friday night, open swim, I think that the way that, and Erica, I'm looking at you because I'm not sure, the $3, it's $3.50 plus $1.75, so it's $3.50 and then $1.75 for everyone else that's with your group? Is that, or is $1.75 for kids?
$3.50 covers the regular open swim, which goes from 7:30 until 9:00. If they'd like to stay an extra hour from 9 until 10, that's a separate swim, and then they can pay both of those on top of it and get in for the entire two and a half hours instead of having to leave the pool at 9 and then re-enter.
Okay, all right. I am going to make a change to that and just go back to the, because the staff recommended that be $5 just for the entire time. So, I will go with the staff, because I misunderstood what that was for, so, and I forgot to ask. Okay, so that'll just be $5, like the staff recommended. Family discount swim is not, we don't have it every week, or do we have it once a week? We have it once a week. Okay. And that currently is $7.50, and then, and that's, $7.50 is for the family, and $2.25 is for hang... is for hang around kids or, okay.
What do you mean by a hang around kid?
Additional children.
Additional children passed the family of four.
Yeah.
Or the five.
Currently, it's based on five.
Okay.
So, just want to make sure, five is that price and is it six, that's where the $2 swims in?
I think so.
Yes, for the six.
Thank you.
Okay. But it is a family of five, so two parents and three kids.
So, this here should be five person, family, not four.
Yes. So, I made that change.
About an hour and a half to two hours.
So, it's shorter than in a two.
No, it's about the same.
Close to the same. Okay.
And I would still, the, you know, sometimes you have someone spending the night or whatever and I would still say, you know, if they have extra kids or whatever, charge the more additional. Okay. Ten punch pass. So, so you didn't read how I did this. First, I took the old, the current price and I divided it by the one, the current price for the ten punch pass and I divided that by what the price is if you're going in for one thing and I got what the discount rate was. And I think because these prices have been winched up over the years, those discount rates were kind of not all over the place. For in district ten punch passes, they were 17% and 22%, the regular and aerobics. And the out of district were 9% and 14%. So, that's why those kind of, so then I said, well, if we apply the new single, single pass price, here's what the price would be. And then I said, well, no, let's just, you know. So, it, rather than go with the same discounts, I said, let's just make it all one discount. In, for ten punch passes, in district discount, I thought 15% works. For out of district, discount 5%. And I did the math for other discounts, but, and we can decide on those later if you don't like those, but I, on the, where'd it go? On this sheet, the one that's just all writing, here I put, for the different passes, I showed you what I thought were good discount rates. Okay? And again, we can argue about that if you don't like what I chose, but that's why I did it that way. So, that's where the ten punch pass prices came from. Monthly pass, the staff had recommended monthly passes and I, I don't see it, I personally don't see a use for a monthly pass because people are going to use the ten punch pass or they're going to go directly into the quarter or semi-annual if they use a lot. I just, I didn't see a need. Quarterly pass, going to the quarterly pass, I went with, again, I looked at, saw what the, what the old discount was and then said, okay, quarterly pass, let's go with 20% for in district, 10% out of district and came up with, the way I did the quarterly, the semi-annual and the annual list, I said, okay, if someone was going to come and swim three times a week, how many weeks are they in a quarter, semi-annual and annual? And multiplied that and said, this is how much they would pay if they paid going in $5 a day. And then I said, and applied the discount and that's how I came up with the price. And I, it's got, it's got a mathematical basis to it, which is why I like it.
Can I add something?
You may. Since you're on the committee.
Well, the other thing here, part of the idea is to make it a little, perhaps a little more understandable to folks. So, a couple of things, you know, one is, and I realize that this, this in and of itself isn't, you don't look at it and go, oh, that makes perfect sense. But, right? But the idea is to break it down for the public in a way that, hey, if you, for example, hey, if you have this quarterly pass, you get a 20% dis, you know, that represents a 20% discount if you come three times a week, an average of three times a week. It's to try to make it a little also, a little more explainable and to tie that, those numbers. I'm not trying to get off track here. But, but I think that part of it makes a lot of sense where it's like you get, the more, the longer you buy your pass for, the greater discount that you get. And that, which, which wasn't necessarily consistent in the past. And so, I think that's really, I think that's really important. Sorry.
And the, the staff also recommended a quarterly aerobics pass and I say, no, let's just, let's just make it, it's a pass. And you can, if you buy a quarterly pass, you get to come in and do anything in the facility all day long for three months or, you know, six months, whichever, however long your thing is. That's, that's what a pass means. And so, let's see. Semi-annual is the six months and I figured those numbers the same way and it's just, I, I honest to God don't know where the numbers came from that they used before, but I just, I don't know. And then, okay. Go to annual. Annual's going to be 40% discount for in district, 30% for out of district. Locker rental, daily right now is a quarter, I would say go to 50 cents. And you know, do you guys know, have you been in locker rooms? You know, there's the short, the short lockers, those will be the 50 cents. And there's long lockers in there that are kind of neat. And that's where I want to put my long winter coat because I don't want someone to steal it. So, I would say have charge dollar for that. And then we need to get into a discussion. Locker rental by the month, currently we don't do that, but that's probably something we need to add. NWA locker rental is $25 and I don't understand why there's a separate NWA. I know they're NWA lockers, but I don't understand why they, why does NWA get a special rate?
Well, they purchased those lockers.
They did.
Yes.
And, and so when kids came on the team, they were basically told, you pay this, and I don't remember, 10, 20 bucks, whatever it was, and that's your locker for as long as you swim.
Swim with the team.
And, and that's how it started.
Yep.
And that's, I can't remember if it was 10 or 20 bucks. There was a one-time.
Twenty-some bucks.
You know, like, here you go, 20.
Yeah, I was about to say, I thought it was 25.
And, and there's only a couple of kids that would possibly be affected by that still. You know, I mean, exactly. Couple of kids left. But those were purchased by.
NWA.
NWA parents. And I think it was when they had the booster club replaced at the time.
Right.
So, that's where it gets kind of odd with that. Try to explain how it is.
No, no, no. And I just remember hearing you say a couple of times that you thought that it was, that those parents, that those people were all gone, but now it's, there are people that are still, that are, that were.
Couple of kids left.
There's only a couple of us left, yeah.
Okay. And we, I just, I didn't, I didn't understand. I mean, other than.
Can I bring up one thing, Commissioner Holly?
Yeah, I'm actually done with, so.
We did one time make a motion, I think it was approved, I'd have to go back to the minutes, and it was to grandfather in those kids that had paid that one-time fee. And everybody else went to the new fee to be charged.
The $25 per year that it was and now.
But we did approve this and I want to thank Commissioner McDougal, who's still on the board.
And I am completely fine with that if, you know, because I know that there used to be a booster club and I love booster clubs and I think, you know, I want to encourage that. But I don't understand why NWA gets a special locker fee and not maybe a student locker rental. So, why Oak Harbor High School, you know? I don't know. This is something that I, we just need to decide as a board what we want to do with that. And I, but I want to point out that it's another NWA.
I think it comes from the fact that they bought those lockers, not the pool or the district.
Yeah.
And so, I would say that's why that would be different.
Okay.
So, that goes back before, you know, those were actually provided by the old booster club.
Went out of existence.
Yes, it went, it did.
Okay. But, and if we, if we want to say, you know what, and it's going to continue, then we should do that.
As a group.
And do we, okay. But just knowing that again, you know, that's, anytime you put NWA on something, it kind of, but I'm fine with it saying maybe NWA or student or, you know, because the high school students, they don't swim all year, but they also, they pay to use the pool. Okay. Now, your questions, comments on this?
My question is, at what point am I allowed to interject?
Now would be the time.
I do have a few.
The chair recommend, recognizes as a direct, the executive director, CAS.
Thank you. Going back to the ten punch pass.
Okay.
Do they expire?
They do not have an expiration date and we had a discussion about that this morning. We're not positive that it's, I know the staff recommended they should expire. Commissioner Singleton and I talked about that because I said, maybe we need to do that and she said, she's not sure it's legal because of that whole, you know, when you give a gift card.
In the state of Washington, that things don't have an expiration date and I'm not sure of the exact classification. But, so what that would, what, in that event, what that would mean to our staff is that after, after a promotional period, whether it's a year or whatever, that the promotional value would expire, but the card would still have the same face value. And so, really the difference there would be how to implement that. And I think that that's something that, that I would prefer to consider over time rather than as part of this because of the implement. I think we have to have an implementation plan for that because it, and probably a slightly more sophisticated process. Is that fair? Just because of that, we can't just say it expires, it has no value because that's not legal in the state of Washington.
I don't see a price on here for a family punch card.
I don't think we have one.
Is that something that we, we want?
We don't have very many families that use it. I think three families or four families total.
You guys can speak up a little for the recording, please.
Sorry, I, from what my understanding is, we do not have many families that use the family punch card. Only about three or four. So, it would be up to the board whether they would want to continue with that or to.
Oh, so one actually existed, but you guys just didn't put it on my list, on the list. Okay.
Further questions from the director?
Yeah, yes. So, there's a price on that, on the new thing for a buck 50 for kids, one to four during, during lap swim? Does that apply in open swim as well?
Yes.
Where is that? On the, on the, on the update?
It's on the other sheet.
It was approved.
On the approved sheet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's already approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just clarifying that.
All right.
Okay. And then the last thing I have here, when you look in there, the long lockers, I just discovered this today, the long lockers are staff lockers.
What?
Is that in our bylaws or in our?
I don't know. I was just told that today.
The long lockers in the locker rooms.
Is that in our policies or procedures anywhere?
I'll have to look into that because I don't know that.
Could we, could you, could you look into that for next month? Because that would, I'm just, would be something I'm sure the board would be interested in. Yes, ma'am?
We do have some patrons who are renting the longer lockers because we have staff members who don't need or want one, so we have several available. I don't know whether it is a written policy from the time that I began being familiar with this facility back in 1999 up until present. It has been tradition. Whether it is an actual writ, we may have to go back quite a ways to find it, but I would be more than happy to.
I would think it would be in the.
Personnel menu.
Yeah, the, yeah, that one.
Because that would be under benefit.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think, I think what it, all it says is there are either lockers or, and we had that discussion when we were going over the handbook. And it's like, all the time that we discussed lockers and I've discussed it with a couple of different people, no one ever told me that. I'm irritated.
I'll put the answer.
Say, I know that we do rent some of the longer ones out to patrons.
And, and I knew that because there was one lady who specifically, her stuff is, won't fit in a smaller one.
And she has larger ones, I remember.
Yeah. But those are, everywhere else you go and you use lockers, the long tall lockers are the, the ones everybody wants because your stuff won't fit in one of the small ones. And your long winter coat, you know, if you don't want it locked off with.
Or if you swim before work and you actually don't have your clothes rolled up in a ball. I mean, there's just.
Exactly.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
See what happens when you ask questions?
Well, I do got one question as far as dealing with this here. You said there, you said there was a family monthly or 10-day pass, whatever.
I don't think it was a 10 punch pass. Might have been a yearly pass.
Because my question is, you know, if that was out there, is there anything else out there that we're not aware of? Well, because you said you weren't aware of that.
Exactly. No, the staff gave me a list and I assumed this was all.
Because when we approve this here, that is going to be it. It's going to be nothing else on it, if there is.
Good.
Then there's going to be some big discussion on why.
Yeah.
While she's looking that up, if I may, I don't see the recommendation on what MWR is going to pay.
Oh, sorry.
And if it's based on the ten punch pass still.
And I have to.
Like run into a.
And I would, if you would just wait for Erica to come back.
Oh.
Because I think, because I think based on what you're going to say, not to stop things, but I think, I think it's something we need her to hear and be able to respond to as well.
Okay.
Fair?
Yeah.
Based on the, we know there are changes.
It's been her board three days. She should know what's going on.
Yeah. No, no, I just.
Still know what happened.
You don't know what you don't know?
She's here.
So, there was a 10 punch pass for family.
How much was it?
$66.
And then how did that break down as far as, what was the family?
And is that in district?
Yes.
May I ask you a question? Is this a 10 punch pass for the whole entire family to come together on one punch? Okay.
So, three people, five people, 15 people?
It would be up to five.
Okay.
Any further questions on the 10 punch family pass? Because I'm going to go back to your point.
No, I'm good. I'll wait.
No, no, now, now I want you to ask it. Yes, please.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's fine.
Well, the question was for us about the military, not.
It was about.
The question isn't for Erica.
No, but it's, but it's for her to hear, I think, so that.
Well, it's for CAS, it's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And the answer is what the military would be paying, because I did, I considered that and it was like, because we have the separate open swim price. So, for laps, a military member who comes in to do lap swim is $4.25 for the adults. Or, you know, they have to pay for aerobics because MWR does not pay for aerobics. If they bring their children, it should be $4. And are, do children sign up separately? Okay. So, the children are $4, which is what the child's rate is. And then, wait a minute, I take that back.
It would be the.
10 punch pass. Because we don't have a ton punch pass for children. So, it would be $4.
Or, or we could apply the same discount. Sorry.
$4.25 is what you're saying.
For adults, the children, so Erica, what?
Currently, we do have a ten punch pass for children, it's twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
See, you guys left that off my list also. Did you not want to have a ton punch pass for children?
We had argued over it, and I think we just didn't get on it.
Okay.
How much would it sound like?
Twenty-six fifty.
And that would be in district?
That is in district, and the senior punch pass is the same.
How about disabled?
We currently don't have a disabled.
Well, that's, youth, senior, and disabled is what, all of the, I've been lumping them together, is what they were, so I would say, I will add to my list, ten punch pass, youth, senior, disabled, youth, senior, disabled, in and out, and that will be, so basically, you take the four dollar rate, which is what youth, senior, disabled is, and you apply the fifteen percent discount for in district, and the five percent discount for out of district. Is that...
And that would be the MWR price, sorry.
I got a question, as far as, what do you call disabled? Is it, I mean, how does somebody define?
By the state.
Do they have to have a card, or, I mean, what? Because...
You have no card, saying you're disabled.
Right. Exactly, because I was saying, I know, plenty of disabled people, there is no card.
You do after you're eighteen, because then you're on Medicaid, but before then, you have nothing.
But what is the state, but what is the state, but what is the state used to organize it?
A seventeen-year-old.
Yeah, that, no, that's why I'm asking.
We'll explain this, alright, once a kid is eighteen, and they're a legal adult, they, at that point in time in the state of Washington, if they are seen to be disabled, they will be approved through DSHS, you know, Social Security, and all this, have to get Medicaid, and then they have a card, they have a Medicaid card, that's really the only thing they have, you don't have any other card that says, hey, we're like disability, and before eighteen, you don't even have that.
But you're a youth then, and it's the same price.
But the thing is, also, not every disabled person has the card.
So what is the state, what is the state law, the RCW and the WAC?
Are we going to make them show a Medicaid card?
There really isn't, not unless you're going to do parking, and handicap parking is totally different.
Okay, so you...
Because that's not everybody. You have somebody show us a Medicaid card, because that is...
So my question is, that the state does not have an RCW or a WAC that refers to the ADA, and what is the ADA required?
Well, the ADA will tell you what wheelchair capability, I mean, wheelchair ramps and stuff like that is, but it's just not going to sit there and tell you, tell you about blind, you know, people that can't walk, but it doesn't sit there and say, you know, if you can't do this, you are disabled, there's nothing that says that, and then that's what my question is, you know, because the state doesn't give you anything.
But are we positive that the state doesn't recognize ADA or disabled for businesses in special tax districts, that's, that's all I'm asking.
It's if you wanted to divulge, you know, there's some, all I'm saying, there's some stuff we need to look into.
Okay.
Before we...
And I was like, but I used, sorry, I used to work at the golf course, and people actually did have to show, they had a card that was proof, if you wanted that pricing, I mean, it's so, while, we're not trying to make people uncomfortable, but they did...
Well, being a parent, saying to a kid, you have a Medicaid card, that's all they have.
Right.
And that's fine.
And so, my question is, what does the state use, what do the RCWs and the WACs use, and what have we historically used in the past, and that's something we'll have to look into.
We've never used anything in the past, really haven't.
Okay.
Have we not had disabled prices?
So we've never...
This is a new recommendation from other places, when we did our pricing.
Oh, okay, so what do other places, that's a great idea, what do those other places use?
Letting cards go on.
Okay, we need, we're going to need to do some, like, research to look into that, because, what we're going to need, because the question will come up, the question will come up to somebody that will say, well, I don't have a Medicaid card for my child, or for my parents, or for my whatever, and so, yeah, how do I do that, you know, and since the state apparently doesn't give us much guidance, and the ADA is very vague on that, what are other place, other like districts using for that disabled? Yeah, because we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Good question, Cecil.
Because I figured it was spelled out, apparently it's not.
So, if you could, since you have a calculator there, so I can sort of set, on the ten punch pass, in and out.
Wait a minute.
You got it, Cecil?
Give me a sec to find it.
I got it, I dropped one, because I thought we were going to do some.
Calculator, we got it right here.
That's three minutes, stop it.
There you go, Steve. You're going to break it. All clear.
So you've got your ten punch pass at twenty-six fifty, and you said it's fifteen percent?
No, it would, you would take, not the twenty-six fifty, because that's the old price, so you would take forty dollars, and then, what's fifteen percent of forty, and subtract that from forty?
So it'd be thirty-four.
Yeah. It's thirty-four, Wendy, did you actually punch that in, or you just do that math in your head?
I just do that on my head.
So you're saying?
Just to make sure she stays with us.
The ten punch pass.
I have a degree math.
And thirty-four.
Yes.
How about out?
So out would be the forty dollars minus ten percent, so thirty-six. Sorry. I'm sorry, five percent is less.
Five percent, yeah, would be thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
So, am I safe to say what you're saying, that for an adult in the military, active duty, MWR would be asked to pay four dollars and twenty cents?
Twenty-five.
Four twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, four twenty-five, my bad, for an adult, for the children, you're going to ask, and MWR pays three dollars and sixty cents?
Forty cents.
Three forty?
Yeah.
In district, got you.
Yes. And open swim, three dollars and fifty cents for the adults.
What is open swim, is open swim the same for all?
Actually, yeah, it's the same for kids and for, for adults. So, open swim, generically, three dollars and fifty cents for everybody.
Which would be new, and would be a different, if you will, accounting practice from what exists today, which is part of what I wanted to be sure was stated and understood.
Yeah.
That's, that, the implication of that, I mean, is, is that it would require a different front desk procedure.
Yeah, they just need, as times change, and the fee for the military is going to change, is they have to put a different signup sheet in, to make sure that MWR is getting billed the right amount of money.
MWR is on contract right now until September thirtieth of 2016, at the current price.
Yeah.
So it won't be able to take effect until...
How did that happen?
How did that happen? We specifically said...
We were supposed to put verbiage in there.
How did that happen?
Yeah.
We never voted on that.
There was supposed to be...
There's a contract in there, it's...
Well, I'd like to see it, I want to know who signed it.
Erica?
I signed the contract with the understanding that the contract would be updated in January.
Okay.
Once the pricing was changed, they said that they realized that we were going to change the pricing, and that when those came through, then we needed to let them know, and we would update the contract at the time.
Okay, so there's our answer.
Okay.
Thank you, awesome.
So, the rest of my statement would have been, it just takes an ECP to a contract, is all it.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay.
And they know that that's coming.
And then, because I did, yeah, we were being told, it's like, they know it's coming, and I did wonder how we managed to get by the last several months without a contract. Okay, good.
There's been lots of, lots of conversation on that.
And I think the expectation, at least from my point, was that there would be verbiage in there, saying prevailing rate, that was, that was what I thought the discussion was, but...
And I do have that conversation back and forth in writing, so...
Cool, good.
Thank you very much, Erica.
Yes.
Thank you, Cat.
Can I just, can I just point out as well, just the things with like, the aerobics and separate, trying to make it one price, I just, again, the idea was to simplify it for customers, from a customer perspective, if there are lots of requests for monthly passes, or if for whatever reason it was seen that this wasn't, you know, gee, we really need a quarterly pass for aerobics, but part of it is, to the face, to the customer, to be a little more, you know what, if you bought a pass, guess what, it's a pass, it means you can walk in and get in when you want to come, and to try to encourage people to be here, to come for, maybe I, if I, to come here for different reasons, you know what, I bought a pass, I've never tried an aerobics class before, maybe I should go do that, but to get people in here more, through the doors more, was kind of the impetus behind that, anyway, so, I thought it was, I thought it was great.
You can use the ten punch pass for aerobics?
Well, that's different.
No, the ten, there's a, there is a separate aerobics pass.
Because I thought that you just said that.
Other than the ten punch pass, but the other, the quarterly, the semi-annual, the annual, that's why we...
By quarterly, you can use it for aerobics?
Yes. Because Suzie lives, lives good, likes to, likes her aerobics classes, isn't she the one that went five times a week? Anyway.
Well, I was saying, that I do like the breakdown, where it explains the price fee, I think that's very transparent and easy for the taxpayer to see, I do like that part. Thank you.
Does anyone disagree with the discount levels? Do you want them lower, raise? Is the, you know, three times a week, is that extreme? I went with, that's what I gauge my swimming, you know, if I'm going to buy a pass, I look and say, well, if I'm going to swim three times a week, that's how I gauge whether I want to buy a pass or not, and then, of course, I swim twice a year, but, that's what, that's what I do, and I think a lot of people are like me.
I think we do.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the, the recommended changes in the draft proposal.
Do I have a second?
The draft proposal with the recommended changes?
Yes.
Okay, you worded it differently, I, I second that.
Discussion.
So when are we going to talk to MWR?
As soon as it's approved.
And if they say they won't do it?
Well, we heard from Erica that they're not going to say that, and that she has the email evidence that they agreed to pay the increased prices.
Yeah, what I told them was, the prices are going to go up, they asked if I knew what they were going to go up to, I said, no, we do not, that is said by the board, they said, okay, let us know.
The reason being, they make up fifty percent of the, of our patrons, and I see raising the price so high on fifty percent of the people, and MWR are not basically paying their way.
Exactly, exactly, oh, and we need to, we need to commence one January, should be part of the motion.
We would need a start date on the motion, if we were.
I will amend, I would like to amend the motion to be effective January one, 2016.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
I don't see anything in here with swim school.
Oh, we, we took that off, because we have not reviewed that program yet, I was ready to, you know, say, but Wendy's like, you know, let's just review it, and she's right, so, we, everything, kayaks, swim school, all, everything else, we just aren't doing, but we need to move forward with the rest of this, in my opinion, and get it done, and starting the new year of whoever the chairman is.
So those would be included with the program review, like we did with in WAC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so what's left off is swim school and kayaks, I think that was it.
Okay, and we haven't reviewed those programs yet?
Correct.
Okay.
I do appreciate your hard work, I, however, think that it's too steep of an increase at this point in time, and I would be remiss if I did not say that, I, the ten punch pass, we're raising it, looks to be about forty percent, a little over forty, and, I just have a problem with raising something that much, I guess, and, I'm going to labor this, I just, I just think it's a little much, and, but I do appreciate your hard work.
And it's constant with what you've been saying, and it's, and, you know, it's just a difference of opinion, because we just think, it hasn't been raised enough over the years, and we're just trying to come up to a point where it's like, we can afford to, you know, do the other things that we need to do, because we're the, we're in a crisis place right now, and we're trying to fix it, so, you know, we just don't agree, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, the biggest thing that concerns me is obvious, is like, when I look at this graph here, that essentially, in every program, we're down from 2014 to 2015, and I just wonder, with, with the trend going down, how we're going to get it back up, at the same time that we're trying to get it back up, we're raising rates so much.
Did you notice the MWR family one, which is new, if you take that and break it and distribute it, I don't think we are down.
I know we're not talking about swim school tonight, we know we're down in swim school.
Yes.
We do know of that.
Yes.
And, so which one are you talking about?
MWR family, it's, I think it's the, the single one there, that, to the, this one, that single, that one.
Okay.
That one, remember, that was not counted last year, because they paid, they, they were in the generic population, and so, if you take those, that, and break it into pieces, like I said, I think it makes up for where things are down, is my guess.
Would most, would they fall mostly into the open swim?
I think so.
Okay, which, it's, it's pretty even, anyway.
Yeah.
What I'm most concerned with is, is there the trend of the aerobics?
And, and we were, it was explained, because the, the temperature more than the other, but, you know, and if we, we raise the prices, and we'll see, and if the pool usage goes drastically down, the new board can shun me and raise, decrease the prices, but, I think this is something that we need to do.
Since we're talking numbers, real quick on attendance, just out of curiosity, has attendance with aerobics gone back up after we set the water temperature higher?
Not as much as we were hoping.
Really?
Maybe twenty percent, maybe twenty percent, from, I mean, it's still down, I think it is steadily coming back up, same with the swim lesson program.
Okay.
The biggest one was the temperature.
Well, this is, this is an aerobics class, right? But it's like, last time I was here, and there was an aerobics class, man, there were like, twelve people.
I've sat in this room Thursday nights for the last three years, and that's the lowest I've ever seen.
Yeah.
We have a bird in our eye, because they were able to make it to eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll have to do a, the motion didn't pass unanimously, I know it didn't, because I only got two ayes, I don't need to do the nays, we will have to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Hoffmeier?
Day.
Commissioner Pierce?
Me.
Commissioner Hawley?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
So before I vote, I am torn, as I recognize, and, and thank you, I do appreciate that everybody was torn on this, as I do appreciate the fact that we need to raise our rates, I share the same concern as many Commissioners that, you know, where is that middle of the road ground?
I think the hard part is, sorry, I'm not trying to be ignorant here, I, I...
You're not offending me?
No, the, the hard part is, if there's a, I mean, if there was a counterproposal, I mean, and I'm not saying that you rushed us, because there wasn't any discussion, but if there was a counterproposal that was acceptable, that would be, that would be great, but I...
But here, as the deciding voter, and as the Chair, my concern is this, we have all discussed doing this for months, it is not a new thing, we have had zero public comment on raising the rates, zero. Webby News Times has said that we were going to do this.
A couple times.
We've said it, we've talked to people, we've, you know, and people have talked to us, and nobody has come in to complain.
And who's here tonight is the dog park guy, thanks for being here, so...
The Chair moves that we accept the motion as...
No more business from the Program Review Committee.
Room rental pricing.
That was another issue that we... That was another issue that we, I'm sorry, I forgot to, that's the other thing on the list, was that pricing issue and that was another thing that we wanted to look at further unless you had something, because you were the one who brought it up last month. You forgot?
No, I didn't.
Because people had mentioned it to you and it is something we are reviewing as part of a program review.
It is, which program are we putting that into?
Well, it's, you know, it's room rental, so.
It's actually adding to it. Because is this room here or was one that was talking about?
But it's also, but it's, yeah, reviewing all the prices as well.
I understand that, but it's also, you know.
Let's move, let's move the room rental pricing and the kids' party prices. I don't see us getting a lot of party, parties between now and January.
Yeah.
We have several already scheduled, but yeah.
They're already scheduled, so they're already, yeah. We're not going to change that price on somebody after we've scheduled it.
Yeah.
So I, I think that we move that to the January meeting to be included. All right.
Because the thing is, we also may have some more information at that time because Kaz may have some more, you know, information to come with that he can sit there and give us so we give a much better proposal and stuff like that.
Thank you. 2015 budget. Kaz?
Well, I'm not sure what you're looking for. I've spent the last week working on the 2016 budget, which is the one that, which is the closest alligator to needing that be.
Yes.
So if there's something you want me to try to answer in the 2015 one.
So my question, I guess my question for the very brand new executive director, is there any glaring amendments that need to be made by this board before we transition to the 2015 budget?
You mean 2016?
No, the 2015 is already approved.
No, but you said before we transition to.
Before this board transitions to a new board at the, at the end of this month, are there any issues that need to be addressed because there probably won't be a lot done in December?
Wasn't there a $20,000 shortfall?
Well, so to back up for a moment, the RCWs say two things, or it is one RCW regarding finances, and it basically says if you have a revenue shortfall, you must amend your budget accordingly. We have a revenue shortfall. Everyone, that is not a surprise. It also says that you cannot exceed any budgeted expense without board approval. And so unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation that both of those things have occurred. So we are under, by law, we are required to, to update the 2015 budget. If, if that is new information for you, I apologize for that, but, but, but that is, but so there, there is a reconciliation that is required. And, and I would, I would think that it would kind of also change the day-to-day business decisions, being aware of that. So I, anyway, that's, that's really what that activity is, is we by law have to reconcile our budget. And we have a number of overages that haven't been approved by the board as well. And I, I don't mean to kind of, you know, shovel the stinky stuff at you.
It's coming anyway, so.
Can you tell us?
Shovel it.
Anyway, sorry.
So between now and the next board meeting, I'd like Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Singleton, I can't appoint you to do anything, to work, I'm trying to think of two people to work with Kaz. You can work with Kaz until the 24th. Commissioner Singleton until November the 24th. Commissioner Pierce till the next meeting to work with the new executive director to address those issues in 2015, identify them so that we may address them at the next meeting in December. Suggestions or comments on that? Awesome. Thank you both very much. Cecil, do you have time to do that now that I've thrown you under the bus before I move on? Because I need to, I need to ask if you have time to do that. That's, that's a, you do? Thank you very much. And do you have time to do that between now and the 24th?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
When does the turning to a pumpkin hapkin, is it late on the 24th or the morning of the 24th, noon on the 24th? Does anyone know?
I, to be honest with you, I, I believe it's when she certifies it on the 24th and it's up to, it's up to the county auditor. When Sheila certifies it, it could be at any time on the 24th.
Commissioner Pierce, you know this.
Well, I know the auditor, Sheila sat there and said that between 10:00 and 11:00 is when she would do the swearing out of.
So I'm going to assume it's that morning.
Ah.
I, yeah.
I don't know. I, so I think, but.
Because if she hasn't certified, she can't, she can't swear anybody in.
Right. She certifies.
Through the 23rd, we know it's the 23rd.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay.
There we go. 23rd. There we go. Through the 23rd. That'll work.
C O B.
Perfect. All right, so.
Real quick, since we did bring that up, did you get that out to Richard?
I have not called Richard. I will call Richard this weekend.
Okay, because 10 to 11 is when Sheila said she would be in the office.
10 to 11?
And could go.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, would you take care of the other candidate and let him know that, please? Thank you. And I will call Commissioner-elect Fort about 10 to 11 on the 24th.
And we don't have to be together, she will, she will do it individually.
Whenever they get there, she'll take care of it.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, 2016 budget.
So we've spent the last six days or more on that. We have something that'll, that'll end up being revised, I know during the year, because we have, we, we're going by as much trending, as much empirical data as we could use and the rest of it is us making projections. And I'm also putting into it growth projections in the revenue side, so a lot of it's based on growth. And that's going to require a lot of work from Erica and the rest of the staff here to get stuff done with me. But as we've talked through it, as we go on through, I mean, we've spent three to four hours a day on it in here. And I, I think we have something that's doable, but, you know, it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work. And I know, I know that once it makes contact with the, first contact with the enemy, it's going to be revision.
The enemy would be?
Real life.
Okay, so not that. That's what I thought.
You know, once, once January 1st hits and now it's, it's a new thing. But we, my, I would like to, and again, I'm, I'm not using the right protocol, but I'd like to have a meeting, a special meeting Monday, whenever you guys are available. I can have by tomorrow, it's close of business, I will, I believe, actually, I'm sure I can have each of you an email with it so you can review it over the weekend. And then a meeting on Monday at the time that all of you are available and can agree upon.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
And it's, that's the sole purpose of the meeting is to come in and do the 2016 budget. And so we crank this out. I, I want to have it done before the commission changes because it will want, you guys know everything that's been going on, especially the two of you that aren't going to be here after December 31st. And I don't know that the amount of, and one of, you know, Commissioner like Hoffmeyer has sat in here a lot, so I know he's pretty, at least peripherally aware of a lot of the issues, but I haven't seen Commissioner-elect Fort except for in the pool. I haven't seen him in here. So it would be, I think in the district's best interest if we could do that with the current sitting board, at least try to get it approved so not to have to go back from square one with the new sitting board.
Isn't it also due to the county?
It's due by November 30.
Oh, not, so it's due anyway?
It's due and so we can't.
Before our next meeting, anyway.
Yeah, and then, so, yeah, I mean.
All right.
Can I ask, I know we need to end the meeting, can I ask a point of clarification here? Our patient friend here, I know his burning question is have we budgeted money, I'm going to assume, is have we budgeted the money for the recommended improvements at the dock park? Is that, is that currently in the, I'm, I'm not trying to, okay, okay. So at least what the.
I think what, what you guys recommended at one of the meetings is in there, yes.
Okay. And so that would include things like, sorry, I'm just.
Go ahead.
So things like improvements to the fences, etc., you're aware of the, okay, okay.
Well, it all was in there, it was just a dollar amount, if I remember correctly.
Right, right.
Two thousand dollars.
Right. But it was, but the number was based on the recommendation. Okay, I just wanted, okay, sorry, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we, do we need a?
No.
Oh, okay, never mind, okay.
No.
Hey, I was trying to move.
All right, we will have, the chair has decided to go ahead.
Well, do it.
And we'll have a special meeting on Monday, the 23rd.
I would ask that it be at 6:00?
6:00, 6:00 P.M.
Because I want to go for a walk, after work, decompress.
That works for me. Does 6:00 work for you?
Whatever time you.
Works for me.
Hold on, I'm waiting for Commissioner Pierce. Take your time.
That'll be okay.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Does that work for you, Kaz?
Yes, whatever works for you.
At 6:00 P.M. on November 23rd, please, director put out, the executive director put out the public notice, and the only thing on the agenda will be the 2016 budget.
And Monday, the 23rd.
Yes, sir. 6:00 P.M.
Mr. Chair, before you go on, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I think that I, if I've missed my opportunity, let me know on agenda changes. We were, we needed to make a date when the NWA do increase was to go into effect.
Well, that was.
Or was that covered just a minute ago?
That was covered with the, shoot, did we?
No, actually.
Okay.
So if new business, we can do that, or unfinished business, or?
We will move that to the end of unfinished business.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate that, NWA.
Because it was supposed to, we were, it was going to all be tied into one and I forgot to make sure that it was worded that way.
All right. Temperature monitoring software console.
Working like a champ.
It's working like a champ. Yes, it is.
That was Matt's words.
All right, fantastic.
How long did it, oh, can I ask a question?
Go on, yes, ma'am.
How long did it take to get, I was reading the, his comments about bringing the thing up, but how quickly did the temperature come back after the swim meet? So was it, was it ready to go?
Twelve, 14 hours. It was a little bit chilly for the people that came in first thing on Monday morning. We had let them know throughout the weeks before that that would be a possibility. By, by the time that we had our afternoon swims, it had come up to 83.
I would like to make a recommendation, if I could, to, to Kaz, because winter is here and it's a bonus. And last year, the, if you mean, the water temperature was 82 degrees and it's 83 degrees now, I would be, really be interested to see, and I, not to look at dollar amounts of difference of fuel cost, but usage, you know, how much more, you know, fuel are we using raising at that one degree? Because it's always been speculated that, oh, it's going to be 10% more, but we really don't know if that's true.
Yes.
And it would really be interesting to see, not the dollar amount as much as just how, you know, how much more fuel we're actually using. Would you guys agree?
I would.
That's actually good.
Yeah, we would really think to see that.
In the past empirically.
And maybe what we could do is compare, and not, and not give it to us next month, but maybe shoot for, and you guys, I mean, if you're okay with this, but through February or something.
Yeah.
That way you have a three-month, you know, hey, you know.
I think the other component to that, the two is, part of this purchase was, was based on an assumption that we would be saving money in, that we would be saving money in heating the pool. And so I, I think I'd like to understand and recognize whether that's happening or not, it, just because that's, I mean, that was part of that purchase decision was we need to spend the money because it's going to save us money.
I agree. My fear would be if, if that one degree raised it 25%, then you'd be like, whoa, you know, we can afford that. But if the one degree is only, you know, you know, 3%, I mean, well, that's really nothing. I mean, I wouldn't, wouldn't be looking at the, I think what it does for the patrons.
Yeah, it keeps the little six-year-olds from shimmering to death and the 83-year-olds.
I'll build a comparison that will make, at least have some initial validity to it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, one question. We got the ventilation and stuff fixed, because I noticed our, because I noticed.
The exhaust fan?
Yes, because I noticed the doors aren't all blown open and them doors aren't open, so.
It was last Friday, Friday we could go.
Good.
And cheaper than we thought it was going to be.
That's very good.
Yeah, it came in $500 shorter than what we thought of because, because when he got out there, he goes, it didn't take me what I thought it was going to take me to do it.
Handicap lift.
The bottom of the director's report for, you know, on staff reports, it's on, it's on staff reports, they're in the back.
Click there.
Matt and I did extensive research on the different types of lifts that we would, we would recommend that we bring into this facility. We went with the portable lift, which we had discussed before, since it is inadvisable by multiple people to drill into our deck again due to the fact that we don't know whether a big chunk of our deck would break off, would we drill into it again? We don't want to take that risk.
Yeah.
So we have recommended that we go with a portable lift. There are several different types of portable lifts out on the market. I never realized how many there were, but there are a lot. We went with the one that we recommend here is the Patriot portable lift. The reason that we recommend this one is twofold. First of all, it does accommodate persons weighing up to 450 pounds, whereas the other portables only went up to 300 pounds. The, the other thing with this one is that not all portable lifts are ADA compliant. This one is. So with those two things in mind, we went ahead and did our research on it and we would recommend that we would go with the ADA compliant Patriot portable lift, which is able to accommodate larger persons. The one that we have currently, the deck anchored lift, only accommodates 300-pound persons as well. So we would like to make sure that we would be able to serve more of our clients that would come in that would be able to use our pool if they needed one that accommodated more than 300 pounds. Matt and I went online, we reviewed the YouTube video on how to use this thing to make sure that it would be something we could all do. It appears to be very easy. It's a one-first thing. It goes in wherever you want it to go in, which is something that our current lift being anchored only here on the deck, if we have somebody who would like to use lanes one or two, they have to then get in here and then climb under all the lane lines and across those swims in order to get to the lanes that they would want to use. With this lift, we can put them in anywhere they want.
Has this been built in the 2016 budget?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
So it's been built into the budget. Does this, does this satisfy that three?
Three quote, as per, yes.
And if you notice, I have four, I have researched with that lift being really the only one that would accommodate. I did research for different companies and those four are listed down here with the post that they would ask for that same product.
This is the Patriot portable pull lift that the staff?
All of these are?
All of these are here. There's four quotes down there for what they would all be on the, on the, the very bottom of the staff report for the director.
How long would it take them to get this to?
It varies depending on the company, on how long it would take them. Some of them say it would be a week, some say overnight, some say that there's a month wait. So it would just be whichever company that we, that we went with.
What about the one that you guys picked? Would you remember what this, important Patriot?
Well, the one that we, this is, this is all Patriot portable lift here, all of them. The Patriot portable lift from Spin Life, which is a company, I'm sorry, I didn't quite clarify that on the way I should. And then there's the, the same lift from Rehab Mart, the same lift from Accessible Designs and in this one. And I folded in this one because they look to be the less expensive option, though I would want to double check with them on what their handling charges may be and if those exceed the, one of the other companies, then we would go there.
So to clarify for the record, all, all four quotes are for the same lift?
That is correct, for four different companies.
And from four different companies, for four different companies. So yes, Commissioner Pierce, this definitely meets the requirement per the. Pierce, this definitely meets the requirement, per the.
So my question is, I mean, if it's in the 2016 budget, where would the money come from?
Well, we'd have to wait until 2016 in order to purchase.
We'd have to wait until 2016 to purchase it, something that we'd have to review on Monday at our special meeting.
I was gonna say, because when we do the review, if we approve that, then we would basically be approving this.
Yes.
Unless it was taken out of the reserve right now to, to pay for, and then that money would be put back in the reserve in the 2016 budget, to be put back in it.
Is it, is it critical that it be replaced right now? I mean, the other one doesn't work?
The other one works, it's going to be out of compliance the end of 2015.
Let's state the fact, that this thing has, you have had it at a time when this thing has quit working?
Yes.
With somebody on it?
Correct.
Okay, I have two things, so one, we have a problem because it's quit working with somebody on it. Two, why does it go out of compliance the end of the year? Because my understanding is it doesn't go out of compliance until you upgrade or buy a new one.
Yeah.
And that is conflicting, because I had, I had somebody tell me that, and I will share with you later who that was, that did tell me that was exactly the case, that it would go out of compliance once we replace it with another one.
Uh-huh.
And all my research that I did, and I can go back and try to get where I, where I found that would be, that this one would be out of compliance by the end of this year.
To buy or purchase a new one? Because I, I, we need to be very clear about that.
Yeah, if we're.
Yeah, if we bought a new one, it would, the one that we have would be out of compliance, correct?
Would be out of compliance.
Right, but it's not out of compliance yet.
No, it is not.
Okay, so the district is not out of compliance with the ADA?
No, it is not, not right now. However, we have found that it is operating correctly.
Right, okay.
So, so may I ask one question?
Go ahead.
If, if we're not going to purchase this like immediately, since it, there hasn't been a time this thing has malfunctioned with someone in it, and even, and this would hold true for even if we had a new one, can you pretty much immediately come up with like a plan on, I mean, like, to when people are trained on how to get someone out of the thing? Because I could just see that would just be a horrible situation, you know?
We, and we.
An emergency plan.
We did make that work, and we did talk about it during the staff training, and it, it went well with the guards that were here, who got into the water and helped a person off of the chair.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think.
You're on the floor.
Paramount that we, that we get this as soon as we can, but.
Further discussion? All right, we'll see that in next week's budget. Open records request? Do we have any left?
We, we skipped.
What did I skip? Critical maintenance list, I did, thank you. Critical maintenance list.
Did you want Matt's report to address some of the critical maintenance?
I think what the board asked for, though, was for that list in its entirety, entirety to be added to the director's report.
Yeah, and then just update that list as he gets updates.
So the entire list needs to be included.
Entire list.
The entire list needs to be included.
But I did appreciate what he did with this, these updates, I thought was very useful.
So in the future, please include that.
And if it's in a different format or as an attachment, I think, I don't think anybody would have an objection to that.
No.
I think the idea is to have it a living, present, visible list until.
They're all addressed.
Exactly, yeah, and, yeah, and, and eventually the, the needs will hopefully be replaced with wants, or something like, you know, that's, that's the, that's the vision, right?
Because I believe he addressed which number on that list he, he had taken care of, because I know the first one on his list was the air quality, and I think he did identify that in his report.
Yeah, he did say this was number whatever on the list.
It was number one.
What, the UV system, did he, did we ever hear back from them yet?
You know what, he had made several tries to get ahold of them and pin them down to whether that UV system is under warranty, and I think it's going to take, might take Cas calling, being a bad guy.
Treating him like the enemy.
Yeah, treating him like the enemy.
Yeah, because it sounds like he's already got a phone call in, and he's waiting for a response back. And it seems like that's with several different things.
Okay, well then maybe I'll step, I'll step in now.
This is, this is the same thing that happened two years ago.
Yes, it is.
It'd really be interesting to talk to former Director Walker, because I cannot remember, because they were having trouble getting bids then too.
Yep.
But he got, he got it done, and I'd really be interested, are we trying to go through the same people?
I don't know.
I mean, that's, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because remember, it was the same story then, nobody wanted to bid, nobody wanted to bid, nobody wanted to bid, and somehow Bill got it done. So it'd be really interesting if somebody.
If memory serves correctly.
I will reach out to him and ask him, and how, who he went through, unless you can maybe find it in receipts, should be able to find it that way. Okay.
I believe a lot of it was, as you were saying, they didn't want to bid because they wanted to replace the entire roof.
Well, it came back with three, we had three appraisals, and one of them was the whole roof, one of them was.
Partial.
Partial, and then whatever was done.
Patch, yeah, the, the ones that patched around the street.
Yeah, that would be probably going back two years ago, probably.
Yeah, two or three. Good point, thank you. Further questions on the critical maintenance list? And thank you, thank, thank Matt again for putting all that information in there.
Sure.
Please. All right, the open public records request.
From what my understanding is, Julie is still working to finish up the last of the, of the one that we had identified before, which required all of the commission emails.
Okay, I sent mine, I think I was, was I the last holdout, I assume?
I, I don't know, she's pretty much got it almost all put together.
Okay.
It's almost all together.
And for you, Cas, I will be sending you a, all of my emails from my old Gmail account. That way, when anybody has a public records request, you'll just, it's like 400 extra emails, besides the ones that are on the server here.
And you already have mine, so.
So I'll get there too.
Okay, thanks.
While we're on this topic, I don't know how easy or difficult it would be, but it would, it would be, I believe it would be great if we could capture the cost of, we know that it's a cost of doing business, because it's the law, that, that is a fact.
That's a good point.
But it would, it would be great if we could capture the cost, so that we understand how much this effort, in moving forward, not, I think 2015, watch, but if we can do that for 2016, so that the time that I spent in open record, that doing, fulfilling public records requests could be captured, I'm not exactly sure how to implement that, but I would certainly love to.
Is it legal to charge, if you're, are you?
Well, no, 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 that's not.
There's a fee that you can charge, I think, something, so much.
But it's for copying.
Is basically what it is.
Fifteen cents per sheet is what it is.
Yeah.
Where she's going is, what's it costing the district man-hours?
Yeah.
Staffing hours.
And I think the challenge.
For informational purposes, more than anything.
For informational purposes, I can track what Julie does each time she has one, but I don't know that each one's going to be the same amount of times.
Well, no, no, and that's, I mean, we, when she's doing N.W.A.C. admin versus financial stuff versus cashiering, she logs in differently for each one of those things. I just, I think, and, and it's whoever's fulfilling it, right? But I think for me, it's, it's additional transparency as well to the public, because part of it is this is a cost of doing business, based on the Washington State law, and I, I just think it's additional transparency that we understand, we as a board, but as well the public, understand, if, if that's possible.
Is it 50 hours a year, 100 hours a year, 200 hours a year, whatever the number is, we're not going to complain, because it is the law.
It's what, it is what it is, yeah.
And it's not like you have to, in my opinion, it's not, you have to create a separate item for it to punch into, just on a calendar or something like that, to say, I worked one hour on this, 15 minutes on this.
She can do that, she can tell me on.
Well, you know, I talked to the City of O'Carver, and you can look on the, I mean, this is a, this is a, this is a budget concern for.
Everybody, everyone.
You know, enough to where they're talking about limiting the amount of public record requests that people can put in, because some people make a.
Career error.
Basically. Basically.
Last year was 138.25 hours, that was definitely a hundred cost.
In 2015 or 2013, 14?
2014.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we started tracking in February, we could track it in January, this year.
Good, so it's already done.
Thank you.
We'll see how, since thing goes.
There we go, cool, that'd be awesome.
It's gonna be awesome here.
There we go. See, and then we can wonder why we ever, yeah.
Clover Valley Off Leash Dog Park.
Yay.
We've already discussed that it's in the budget for next year. We would like to thank you once again for the wonderful work out there, and I know there's a bunch of recommendations, did you have anything, Commissioner Pierce, additional, or?
Well, the one thing I do want to sit there, and, and I'll probably, I'll have to get more information, is as far as, you know, who all's involved with, with the dog park out there as far as cleaning it up, doing stuff, so when we do the letter certificate, whatever we, whatever we do, that we got everybody on there, or at least most people on there, worded in such a way where it covers everybody, especially organizations, if there is more than just one organization, because that's something that we really need to look at, and for the most part, this would normally come from Cas, but under the same aspect, for the amount of work that's been done out there.
Yes.
We as a board, I think we as a board need to do this here, and like I said, I'll get more information with Mike to sit there and present at our, at our next meeting.
Awesome, so we will carry that forward to next month, to do a board appreciation for the, the organizations and the individuals that have done some.
Matter of fact, can we sit there and send an invite to them to come out?
We definitely can, would you take care of that?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
We got new officer, officer that we just selected.
Yes.
Last month, so I will let them know on Monday.
Yeah, I've talked to him before, I know who he is, he was second power plans.
Just a quick question for you, Nicholas Daye, who was, I was working with before from FRC.
Yes, yes.
He was going to send to us the logo for the command that we could use when we put together a sign we put together.
Yes, I think they discussed that at the last meeting, which I was not able to get that, I will bring it up to him on, or the president that we have. They did pass it over right there, so I will remind him, if not, I can send it to you, but I will get with them to get that.
They had asked that we, asked if we could possibly put that up there somewhere.
We're still, yeah, we are still, we have not approved our logo yet, so that's one issue that we have right there, but I will remind them.
I missed it.
Thank you.
We work with this guy that's a word guy, and he says, let's call it the canine, the canine free-range recreational facility. Facilities, facilities, yeah, because we got more of one dog park here, maybe.
The roof.
Yeah.
That's funny.
What I would like, I guess if we're going to look at signing like a letter of appreciation or what, what have you, is what all you have done up there, so.
A list, yeah.
Because we were looking, did you guys lower the fence in some areas?
No.
Because I didn't see.
Looks like somebody repaired some fencing out there.
That is mighty, I'm not sure about the fence right there.
No, we're not going to like, hey, you should have done that.
No, it looks great.
I don't know about the fence.
Maybe Matt did something else.
For Mike, for Mike's going. No, 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 fantastic, we want to recognize, because it is fantastic.
That way it's like, you know, blah, 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 blah.
The things I know we did, we painted the signs, we cleaned up a lot of rocks on some of the areas right there, and we cut the weeds, and we pretty much got a lot of the red, the blackberry bushes out of there.
Yes, you did.
Now, the fence is, I'm not sure, I think we just filled in the areas with those rocks that we have up there, I think that's why it's just a little bit lower, or a little bit lower, because of all those rocks.
The ground's actually higher.
The inside to the outside, so.
Cool, and then our executive director calls that, so we're in a script now? Or, no?
And I don't know if I can say the name, but there is a new addition to the community that's, I don't know if they're born yet or god?
Yes, Andrew George Melon.
Eric's.
Eric's.
Eric, the guy who's normal here, doesn't talk, he has wife and him just had a baby.
Oh, congratulations, pass our congratulations on Eric in his field, please.
I thought you were going to talk about a litter of puppies.
I know, I thought it was going to be like, yeah, exactly.
All right.
I got his puppy right now, so they're probably fighting in my house right now, so destroying my house.
Well, thank you, all right?
What I would like to say, just, and I think Cecil said it, but I just want to take that too, thank you for everything, because you know what, if people get involved and make changes, and for the good, for, for others, and, and you are a light in this place, because there are good times where we've needed more of that, just want to encourage you, and thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we're done with the dog park, thank you for coming, Mike, we really appreciate.
Well, thank you, I will see you Monday.
Thanks. All right, the interim director performance appraisal, I have the final appraisal now, so I am going to forward this and actually add it to the Monday, unless there is objection from the board, as I now have the final one, I will add this to the special meeting.
You forgot the other one.
On Monday, Monday night.
So let's not, let's not be ridiculous here.
So as, as we now have all the information, let's do this Monday night, as we, we, this is the board that she worked with.
Yes.
So are there any objections to adding that to the special meeting? Because it's an open public meeting.
Can we ask Ms. Miller if she's going to be here?
Can you make the Monday, that's a good question.
And we'll make that the first.
That's a very valid question.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much, okay.
You're okay with that?
We'll move that to Monday.
Would you be here for the budget meeting anyway, or not? Okay, then, okay. Now, is that, is it tabled to Monday, or it's?
No, it's added, it's added to the Monday special meeting.
And from tonight, it's moved?
Well, it's an, it's an unfinished business item.
Yeah, still unfinished.
Okay.
It remains. All right, district mission and vision?
We were unable to schedule anything, and so it's kind of a, it's, it's a push. The, the request from Kathy, so we were unable to get a date, and the request from Kathy Coffey, if we want to move forward with this activity in 2016, would be she'd like to, she'd like to meet with the two of us, because I think she'd like to get, with you to, it requires a bit more planning, and so if that is agreeable, then I would just plan to meet with you and Kathy, if that's, if that's okay, if that's not acceptable, then we can wait until January to do that.
Unless there's a rule or a law somewhere that says you can't while you're taking your six-week vacation from here, I'm good with it.
Does anyone have an objection if I, if I proceeded down that path to meet with, meet with, with Cas and Kathy?
So you would be continuing researching district business in a private manner?
Okay.
Well, I was going to say the one thing, that's what, that's one thing I would also like to see, is more people involved with, I'm not saying 50,000, but you know, a couple more people involved with, you know, some stakeholders, as far as some people with the pools, some people with the dog parks, you know, we get some of the baseball fields and stuff like that to sit there and work out stuff. I'd like to see more people on there. And I think that, I would think we could get a, you know, a great profit, but not too many, not like five, you know, four to five, something like that.
I, I think, I think it's fair, I, personally, I mean, I'll, I'll defer to Kathy's guidance because she does support. I, I think it's fair to ask for inputs, but I think the, the actual mission and vision has to be a board activity because the board has to own it.
I didn't say it wasn't a board activity. It is a board activity, just like the City of Oak Harbor.
Right.
They're doing the mission statement and stuff, but also they're getting information out from all the citizens.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's going from the planning commission and the other stuff up to the city council and stuff. The city council is the one that does the final approval. And I know that the board is the one that does the final approval.
Okay, all right.
But I'm just saying, I would like more information. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Remember when we had Tara Isom?
Mm-hmm.
What, what happened with that? Wasn't she, did we, weren't we going to talk to her about sitting on part of a?
We did, planning, strategic planning. That was strategic planning.
Good question.
Yes.
Did she ever do that?
No, we moved that died, an ugly death.
An ugly death. Okay.
I don't, I guess I didn't recall it dying. It just never went away.
It just, it just, it just went away.
Yep.
Into the abyss. Okay, thank you.
All right, so district mission and vision, that's moved. Appointment of new chair and secretary, I believe that was moved until the new board convenes in January.
Yes.
What we will need to do is.
Is the next board meeting.
Is ask for an interim secretary.
I make a motion that Cecil Pierce relieve Commissioner Holly as the chair.
As the chair?
Or as the secretary, by the way, as the secretary.
I'm okay with that. As the secretary, so there's a motion to.
I think that was vice chairman, was, if it, if vice, that's why, because we're here tonight.
Ah, vice chair, that's correct.
But we won't be here next week. That's why, that was supposed to be vice chair.
So we have, we have a motion to have, to Cecil Pierce, Commissioner Pierce, uh, replace Commissioner Holly as the secretary until new elections in January. Is that correct? Elections by the new board in January.
Can I withdraw that and ask a question?
Yes, you may withdraw.
I would like to withdraw that. Here's the problem we have, because we're also going to need a vice chair.
Yes.
Oppositions.
Because the vice chair could actually, help me out, because you guys are your Robert's rule good guys. All right, so, I know, right? So January comes, boom, okay. How do they lead a meeting? Can, can, for example, can the secretary?
Here we go, chair, vice chair, then secretary.
So, if.
Something happened to me between now and January 31st.
So if.
Or December 30th.
If Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, 31st.
If Mr. Pierce served in the role as secretary.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then, come January, he would be able to lead that first meeting.
Yes.
At which time a new, the officers would all be kind of filling, right?
They would have to do that as a first order of business.
First order of business.
That's correct.
So with that said, I would make a motion that Cecil Pierce relieve Commissioner Holly as the secretary of the board.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
No, I'm not gonna say.
I just want to say I love you.
Starting when?
Further discussion? No? All in favor?
It'll be the next major meeting.
Aye.
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 Nay.
So I have to take a roll call vote?
No, you don't. Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
But all.
So I'll take, I'll take the minutes for the special meeting.
Please, okay.
But then you'll have to take them for the, the regular meeting in December.
I'll be absent.
Any subsequent.
Yeah, exactly, in any other meeting that's after the.
That still leaves the, um, issue of the vice chair, and as much as I hate to say it, um, no one, no one knows what's gonna happen the next second.
Yeah, I move that Steve Hoff, Commissioner Hoffmeyer replace Wendy Singleton as the vice chairman for that final, after the 23rd of November through the 31st of December.
As long as he can modify how long he can talk.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Further discussion? Thank goodness you can't amend that motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Board training?
Oh, gosh.
Somebody put that on the list, or was brought it up. Oh, um, it was board training from C-Wiz or those dudes. What's it, what did they call those guys?
CIAW.
CIAW, yes. Did we find out, um, when they can do that?
Uh, yes. She said that Wednesdays in January and February are not good. Otherwise, please let her know. She said any weeknight after the first week of January that the board would like to schedule, she would be open, she's scheduling. I sent her several dates, and she said those are all fine.
What's the duration?
She said the duration would be approximately four hours. She said it might be less if the board is cooperative.
So then, something that the board, the new board would probably need to vote on at the, or discuss at the January regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she said February would be fine as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Instructional incentive program.
Um, do we, before we go to the next topic, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, do we want to, um, again, because two of us won't be there at the December meeting, should we send some times that would be good dates for us so that it can be worked out in December when we're gonna do training in January? Because the longer you sit on that, then it's like, well, now January is all full and, you know, that's all.
Well, she said February was okay as far as the training, too.
I know, but don't you want to get everybody trained as soon as possible?
I, I agree with that, but the thing is, is I, I, I would rather just, just do it in January and start to get it going, because I think we can do it, you know, get it going pretty quick, within the first week in February, you know, at that timeframe.
All right.
She didn't say their availability was pretty open.
Okay. All right.
Instructional incentive program.
The instructional incentive program is one which gives, uh, staff members up to 80% or is 80% of their class costs back. For example, if I go in and I pay $175 for a life-threatening class, because I've been teaching swimming lessons, um, I get a staff discount, but then I also get 80% of my costs back as well. This is something that our staff members have been taking advantage of. It is costing the district hundreds of dollars every year in a refund to employees who get not only an employee discount because they've been working here in another department for the class, they also get a pay raise for receiving training, and then they get the instructional incentive on top of it where they get back 80% of their classes back. Uh, it has also been extended to people who have not been employees here, but yet has, have taken the class, have come in, have worked their 250 hours, and are turning the forms in as well because it's part of the incentive program. It's not happened recently. It has happened in the past, in the past years. Um, the, the senior staff have discussed this at length during several of our meetings, and in every place that I have ever worked and some of the places that the others have worked as well, when you are an employee and you invest in yourself to get some extra training, uh, usually what you get is a pay raise that comes along with that to reflect your, the time and effort that you put into the training. They also get more hours as well. The instructional incentive program on top of it, we recommend for financial reasons that that program be let away with, since the employees do receive many other things on top of that, including a pay raise, more hours, and they do receive, if they're employees here, the employee discount on the class.
So, um, this is part of our, um, current, um.
Handbook.
Handbook, employee handbook?
Yes.
So, um, my suggestion, before I open this up to discussion with the board, would be that if something like this is a proposal in the future, um, because what I'm going to ask, unless there's an objection, is that you bring that, the current written proposal in a Word format with the proposed changes, and then, almost like, I hate to use this word, an executive summary memo, this is what we currently have, this is why it's good, this is why it's bad, and this is the recommended changes, right? And that way, all five board members can look at that, and they can look at the policy, they can ask questions, they can do their own research, and then they have something with which to take action on with the recommendation, or to not take action on. So, and thank you for the information, but that's my suggestion moving forward. Suggestions for the board, from the board? Comments from the board?
I think it's a great idea.
To provide us with information?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, and it was an expense of almost $1,000 this year.
Yeah, really, at this point, the recommendation would really need to come from CAS at this point, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk it out.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, real quick, because that's also something that is not budgeted as far as an extra cost, because it is costing us extra money and stuff like that. It's not like we really budget for that.
Yeah, it's hard to budget because you don't know who's gonna take it.
Exactly.
But not having it there saves us money for other things.
Right.
And that's the way it plays out in the budget for next year.
No, no, I understand, but it needs to go away, but, yeah.
I, I would move, Mr. Chair, that we, uh, because we're at the end.
Mm-hmm.
That we, uh, make the N-WAC due increases effective January 1st of 2016.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing I would like to bring up is what Dick Taylor, Coach Taylor said in the first, to keep that in mind in the future. He said historically that swim coaches raise dues in September at the beginning of the season. He, and I think that we all saw that email, and, uh, and the reason that he thought it was, uh, was okay now is because they were told at the beginning of the season that that was supposed to happen. And, and I had a, had a talk with, with, uh, one of the people coming on as a, as a commissioner, and says, "Well, that makes no sense why you would start it in September and not January, except that you realize that swim school, the swim team season starts in September."
That's correct.
And I just kind of wanted to go on the record as that.
Thank you.
For the future that we, we consider do increases for the swim team in September, so.
I'm, I'm not sure what email you're talking about, but, um, if, if there has been some communication. Actually, I would just love to be on that distribution list.
Yeah.
To say.
Well, I'm trying to think, did it come in an email? Did you see it?
I remember we either talked about it, or.
I think we talked about it.
Or it was in his, maybe it was in these.
Well, he mentioned it in the, during the staff interview.
Maybe that was, my bad.
Sorry.
He did, he talked about it when we were, we were interviewing CAS, that's it.
But that is why the September thing, because swim, swim team, the season starts in September, so.
Did we do, when we, when we approved the changes of those five, the five fees at the top of the list, did we have a date on that where we were supposed to?
No.
Couldn't we add to your, um, motion, the N-WAC dues and the, the top five fees that were approved?
Oh, this year.
Yeah.
Those we did do. I apologize.
Oh, we did a date for that? Okay, 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 nevermind then.
Yeah, that was effective January 1st.
I'll take that back.
I do have one question, though.
Yes.
Before we, we vote on this, is, is the high school program.
That also is to be reviewed. We have not changed, we have not changed that.
Okay, because I wanted to be sure of that because, yeah, because, uh, I would, if so, I would want to change it to where they weren't paying traveling expenses, because they don't travel.
The high school kids that swim.
The high school prep team.
That's true. And that would be part of that program review, yes. Right.
Okay, so I would need you to take care of that now, right?
Well, it's not during this motion.
Okay, gotcha.
It would be, it would have to be a separate discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
But it's a fair, it's a good point.
They, because they were, they got taken off the list.
Okay.
They're not on this list, so they are not paying, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, further discussion on the N-WAC fee increase starting on January 1st, 2016? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I, can I just back up for one second? I, I think, Donna Sue, I think you're, I think you're misinterpreting the discussion. It was about the high school prep, not what the high school pays.
No, no, no. Yeah, no, and as soon as, then he said high school prep, but again, they were not on the list. They.
They were, they were in the original proposal, though.
No, no.
They were on the one sheet.
But they weren't on the second one that we talked about.
Because I know the one, I know the one you're talking about, because it was on that sheet. And I had thought about that after the fact, because I thought, well.
I wondered if they did, because remember when he was adding and putting people in different groups? I thought they just did away with it.
Well, he said that there were no kids presently in the high school prep.
And I don't think he, he would recommend that we do that again from the conversations again.
So at this time, it sounds like the program is.
Okay, in that event, but, I mean, we, we voted to increase the dues across the board 15%, and so if that firm exists, it applies.
Yes.
Additionally, we voted that with the exception of masters, I mean, just for clarification, with the exception of masters, that the 750 max 1250 be implemented. So if, if we continue with that program, you are correct, that we would need to, that would need to be a motion to remove that.
So going forward, if he reinstates the program with the director, the director would have to bring that forward to the board for that program change to be approved anyway. So at that time, the board could address it.
So we're okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Kind of by weird default.
But it works.
Yeah.
All right, further, okay, we're done with the unfinished business, moving to new business. We're, first thing on new business is the Northwoodby auditing officers. I have a resolution 1502 and 1503.
Let's employ travel policy, or, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
Oh, I, I did change that.
You did. I, I forgot. It was so long ago.
I know. It seems like forever. So we have two resolutions for the district auditing officers. One, uh, assigns the responsibility of district director, um, and we voted to designation, designate Steve McCaslin as the executive director and auditing officer on November 19th. And the other one would recognize Erica Miller as the assistant auditing officer.
Basically, what this does is, right now, Steve, as the executive director, is not able to sign vouchers and all of the, the checks, things like that. So what this does is this allows him now to, to do that, to take over the responsibilities of the director, which is the, to audit and to, to sign the vouchers. And what this does is it removes me from that position which was voted on, and I can be the interim director, and puts me in an alternate position should Steve not be available.
Thank you. So it'll be resolution 1502 and 1503.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept, um, resolutions 1502 and 1503 as, as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. For that, I signed it.
Yeah, that was a good, good thing for you, huh?
Uh, employee travel policy?
That was, Steve, I think you said you wanted to talk about it, but it's the, um, it was.
Use of the employee vehicles to run down to Coopville and so on to the district business.
Basically, and this would probably, I guess, be something we would have to start to work towards. But right now, you've got employees who are driving their own vehicle to Costco or wherever, or, no, I thought that's what.
Down to county.
Okay.
Costco gets delivered.
Okay, okay, down to the county, and they're using their own gas. So, uh, basically, uh, it would be a policy on, on how their reimbursement.
The problem was, we were discussing, in, in the discussion, I think it was with you, CAS or whatever, it came up that the, um, somewhere along the line, the people got told that they either could check out of, not be getting paid for traveling down. They had to check out of work to drive down and get reimbursed, or not get reimbursed, which is ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
So that was, we just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd forgotten. We've had so many meetings, but that was, but that was the whole thing, was that that is, I don't know where that started or how it could have started, but someone obviously read the regulation wrong and told everybody this. But absolutely, Joanne, when she's driving down to county, needs to be recompensed for the wear and tear on her automobile. She absolutely does not have to, unless I, you know, Washington law is as weird as I know that it is, but I can't believe even Washington law would say that. But anyway.
And what we compared it to was like, if I go on travel for the government, my trip driving from my home to Seattle, I get paid for it. Sitting in the airport, I don't, that's kind of weird.
I did as a consultant.
Can I add one?
Yeah, depending on the company.
That's my contract.
If you could start to work towards that for the next board.
Yeah.
And the one thing I would be looking at is, there's a state travel charge that the state rate that you charge for mileage and stuff like that.
Fifty-seven and a half cents a mile.
I'm just saying, state rate, not federal rate. Because I think there's a state rate, I think it's federal, whichever.
The IRS rate.
And, and also, I'm getting at with the rate is, if it changes, you don't have to go back and change it. It's already automatically done, whatever the current rate is.
Yeah, because I'll tell you, I just thought it was a double standard on that, and it's kind of sad, is the swim coach gets paid mileage to go to his front knee, and other employees haven't been getting paid mileage to do their job.
And it's based on the policy, the way the policy's written, unfortunately.
In the handbook?
Yes. So it'd be a policy change from you to be approved by the board.
Thank you.
It's that simple, yes.
It really is in the handbook that way?
Hmm?
Huh.
It is.
Yeah.
I don't remember, okay.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
They should be, they should be reimbursed for any expenses.
As a matter of...
Thank you very much.
Approved.
Staff reports. I'm sorry, Steve, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Okay, staff reports.
I think this one on the director's report, of course, was cool, and which you guys saw already. Are there any questions on anything else on any of the reports that I could try to answer for you? Any of you guys are walking through?
I didn't have any. Erica, thanks for all your hard work as director. I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, yes.
There's like, the weight of the world now off your shoulders?
Not yet, I still hang on every day.
No, it's, it's with the...
I appreciate the INWAC report, I don't know if we're moving through all of them, but the additional detail is really, it's, it's much appreciated.
Something we've been working on in senior staff meetings at the time is the quality of the audity of the reports.
It's great, no, it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all of them, actually, but...
Do you have a door that has a hard time latching? Sorry.
It's all good.
Did, did the coach write this? Because I read this and I thought, it was, it was, if he wrote it, it's very well done.
Yes, he did.
To tell him, "Well done," because I did, I read it and was like, wow, I didn't know he could write like that.
I think it's really good.
That's because your daughter figures heavily.
It was also good seeing stuff in the paper and stuff on the swim team and stuff like that. To get some positive comments.
We got more positive stuff coming, we're, we're into the hopper.
I will say this right now, I know that the Blue Heron Booster Club has been meeting. And they're up and running, and are actually putting in their paperwork. They finished their bylaws, and they're getting ready to move forward to...
They sold on that name.
Blue Heron Booster Club?
The Blue Heron?
Oh, yeah, they are the Blue Herons, brother. Don't mess with Blue Herons, man. That long beep gets you every time.
It is an odd thing, though. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what the protocol is, and I don't have a vested interest in the name, but I think it is interesting that it's a program of the district, but we have no authority when it comes to name, image, anything. That is a little odd. Let's put it that way. So it would be kind of like...
She want to change the bylaws so you can...
No, I, it's, if it's, if it's a program of the district, it would seem to make sense, though, that the district would actually approve...
I liked the Northwoodby aquatic club, Sea Wolves, I just...
There's still the Northwoodby aquatic club.
But just the Blue Heron.
Their thing was the Aqua Jets, and they all thought that sounded like a hot tub.
And I understand, I think, I think it's the point as to who has the ultimate decision-making in, for things like the name, the image, what the, you know, what the, the t-shirts look like, you know, whatever. It's, it's just an interesting, it, it seems disconnected, and that is a little odd to me.
If there's a logo or something, I absolutely agree, you know, it's something should be, it should be coming from the district.
They don't go that far yet.
I know, but that's something we need to look at.
Go Blue Heron. I was just picking on the Heron.
My only comment is, there, there you go. If you want to write a policy for it, there you go. It's all yours, starting in January.
You're such a lame duck.
Ooh.
Well, it's the truth. I mean, to change that, to address your concerns, the way to do, to move forward would be to...
Absolutely.
As a board, because as the board, what we do is set policies, the way to do that is to change the policy, and, yeah, I agree.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah. And the employee of the month? Oh, I gotta read this. I don't have it. Do I have it? Do I have one to shine, sign?
Isn't that...
Before you go on, real quick, on the, on that, it's a good job on the swim.
I think that's it.
No, I've got it, but I normally have a certificate to sign.
Oh, to sign and stuff.
Yeah.
It should be in your folder, out there.
I was about to say, Kaz is holding that on me.
Kaz, it's fine.
I like you use that one, because the word, the script on it's a little larger.
We did that up first.
And by the way, he's a cashier. It doesn't say that, but he's a cashier.
Thank you. All right, this one, and I need to, so let me get this.
He's not a consultant of some kind, you know, putting out the goodwill of the...
Oh, that's hard.
All right, employee of the month, October 2015, Albert Almodova. In the short time within WPRD, Albert has quickly become a favorite with patrons and staff alike. He performs his job in a professional manner with an emphasis on connecting with patrons and outstanding attention and detail. Albert upholds the responsibilities and duties of his position 100% of the time and often steps in to fill shifts on short notice. He is a true team player and asset to the front desk team. Thank you for all you do, Albert. Please do not leave us. Hmm, there's some insight.
Thanks, Albert.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you. Steve, pass over.
All right. Further questions, comments on the staff reports? Public comment not needed. Final board comments. Steve?
I would just like to say, well, an honor has been really to, to work with you, and I know that we haven't always agreed, but at the same time, that's how the government works. And the thing I respect about both of you is that you, you came here and you continue to with the best intentions for this district. Sometimes it would appear maybe that you don't have a dog in the fight, and at the same time, I know that you do because you're a taxpayer, and you want this facility to be the best it can be. And I respect you and admire you both for, for dedicating so many hours to, to this district. It's easy sometimes for somebody like me to be involved, because I've had a kid that's been involved in programs here for, for eight years or more. And for you to give up your time to do what's right, and to, just to, to serve the district, I will always respect you both for that. And, and I know you guys are going to do great things. And it's so good that we got a director in place, that it's moving forward. And I just want to encourage you just to, just to keep going, you know, and encourage you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Commissioner Pierce?
That was very nice. But see, that's what talking about, where we need to live and talk about. I loved it, that was great. The only, the only thing I want to say that I should have brought up during the dog park and stuff is, I did sit there and call the county and talk with them about, I've got his name at work, and I'm out of here. But I said, a five, a five-foot by five-foot concrete pad, you know, to put the porta-potty on, does not require a building permit of any kind. So we are good to go with that, and I'll be, I'm still looking into that, you know, I'll give you that going over the next couple of months. But I'll, when I get it ready to go, I'll get with you, and we'll make sure that it's planned out good, all right?
Sure. Commissioner Singleton?
A couple of things. First, I would say if, on the fee proposal changes that we approved, I would say, I would, I would ask for you to look at them and see if there's something that you feel really needs rectification prior to them taking effect. And I would, I would honestly suggest that you have that discussion for any of those line items next month. And, and I, I hope, while I hope that Commissioner Holly agrees with me, part of it is, we want something that lasts and that is correctly impactful, but not unnecessarily overburdening. So it was, it was difficult how we went through that, and it was probably a bit inelegant overall. But so I would just ask you guys to, to do the homework there, and if there's something that you really feel like, like the district can't live with, to address it. I personally, I will not, I will not take it personally, I am not the one who did a lot of the work here, so that's easy for me to say. But part of it is, we want, we want policies that we can live with. So, so that's number, kind of number one there. Steve, your passion for this district has always been evident, and, and that is, you know, thank you for that, it requires that. And, and so I'm really appreciative. Again, you know, we don't, we don't always see eye to eye and everything, but you're right, I mean, that's, that's how you ultimately get to the best solutions, right? Is, is not everybody agreeing on everything. Conflict can be the greatest agent of change. And I believe that we have, we have done that to the best of our abilities here, and that I'm confident with. You, I have, I have known through this district for quite a while, ups and downs and whatever, and I don't know that the district or the public will ever understand, truly, this is, this is in all heartfelt, will understand the debt of gratitude that they owe to you.
True.
You bring to things, not only, not only a passion for doing the right thing, but an evenness to ensure that things move forward when there is lots of tumult, whether it's with the board or whether it's with situations at the pool. And I, I can't say that enough how valuable that is and how much will be missed, even though you will be celebrating. Yeah, but, but you, the fact that you didn't quit, the fact that you have, have always tried to see both sides of things, it, and, and the fact that you, you saw this place through some really dark days, that many of us and most people in the public will never understand, and that you were able to see it through that point is, it's, it's so commendable, I don't even, there aren't even the right words for it. So, thank you for that commitment.
Thank you. I'm humble, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so I don't know whether to let everyone stop crying now, and then I'll say my nice things, or say what, I have a matter of business. I would like to keep my email account, I don't have to be Commissioner for, you can send it to Donna, whatever, for those five weeks, I'm not a Commissioner. I just want to be kept involved with what's going on, if that can happen. And I, Wendy may not want to know what's going on, but I would like to. So I don't, you know, however...
I don't think we can. I mean, the, the pool ones, I don't think we can. You can be an interested party, an outside party, but we can't, and there is a strategy, right? We talked about this a long time ago.
I'll tell you what I can do. Anything that comes to me, if you will both provide me with your personal emails, I will forward everything I get to the both of you.
Okay, that would work.
And I can figure that.
That is permissible, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
As long as there's nothing that needs to be redacted.
Okay.
Well, yeah, if it's, you know...
It's those names.
That needs to be out there, so, yes.
Yes.
But the strategy was supposed to be that the Commissioner Two, the Commissioner Two, my, that, that basically, the Commissioner Two email, for example, of mine, would be, would be archived as Wendy Singleton, and then would be reinstated. So basically, we would, but then, so for example, Cecil's would be taken from Commissioner Five and moved to Commissioner Two. So, I mean, there is a, there is a strategy that will need to be put in place for, to, to make all that happen. So ours will basically sit idle until it's reinstated in our new positions.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's fine.
Right? I mean, that's what we had talked about.
Yeah, because actually...
So you was going to look to see if that were possible, to get that done?
It has to be done a different way, because I, you just brought up an interesting point, because when we switched over to this whole thing, somehow, there was a time in there somewhere where I got your emails, I think. And it was like, it was kind of strange.
I don't, yeah, I don't know exactly how that happened, but then, then the whole vice chair thing, but, but, so basically, that's what, okay, well, anyway, that's what, that's what I thought the strategy was, if it's going to be different, if we could just be notified what that is so that we understand. Because from my perspective, continuity of things I've already communicated with people, I'd really like to, to, to not lose that.
For sure.
For obvious reasons. I mean, we have to, we have to retain it somewhere anyway for public record, but it would be great to reinstate it.
Figure out how they can shift it over to the new account?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, Steve, we, we don't always see eye to eye, but it's like, you always, you always said the same things, and so it doesn't, and it doesn't mean it's wrong, it's just different than how I see the world or whatever. And it's like, and I appreciate the fact that you always say the same, you know, it's like, you, just because they're different than me, they're your values, and I think there are a lot of values that people that are not me, that are out there, share. So it's like, and it's like Wendy said, that conflict is, leads to good things, sometimes. But to have five people in this room will come to a consensus of things that we can all live with. So I've appreciated your presence on the board. And Sean, thank you so much for being the leader. And as the chairman, it's the, you have the most amazing ability that the rest of us in this room don't have, where you, you just pour oil over troubled waters, and you speak, and everyone calms down. And it's like, it's not a marine, a marine thing that I would have thought, but it's like, but it must come from being able to handle crises as your work all the time. And so I can see that. And it's like, thank you so much for your chairmanship and for your service to your community, because it's been amazing.
Thank you.
And we will miss you.
I would say I will miss you all individually. I will not miss being here on Thursdays in all. After four years, four and a half years of doing this, I'm ready to hang it up. Steve, thank you for stepping in when you did. Thanks for standing with me through it all, even, you know, if we didn't always vote the same way, I, I really appreciate that.
Brother's life, man.
That's, thank you. Cecil, thank you very much for stepping up. I know we leave with all, all three of you, this board and Kaz is a direct reflection of that. We've done some wonderful, wonderful things this last year. And I am really excited after these four and a half years. Let me tell you something, I am excited in ways that are unbelievable on how this district's going to move forward. So thank you, thank the three of you for that individually. Erica, thank you for all your hard work stepping in. Kaz, welcome. Thank you for actually saddling up, because I had to rode out of town. But, no, seriously, you, you've been professional, and this district has a lot to look forward with the employees and with our new executive dressing room. Thank you very much. And to you too, thank you very much for all your hard work. I echo what Steve said. You know, you guys, you guys, you gals have come in here and a whirlwind of knowledge and dedication and hours that you tirelessly spend on this place, and thank you very much. It has been fun, it has been an honor, and thank you. I greatly appreciate it. So with that being said, our next meeting, for those of us that will be here, is on December 17th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, I want to talk.
Okay, motion is adjourned at 9:30. Thank you all very much.